Six oh two, we ready to go? I feel the other folks in. We're having a planning meeting, budget planning meeting tonight, kind of talking about what Heather's been working very diligently on and getting all kinds of counsel from people and looking at all different items and all kinds of angles of those things, so I think it's really good, it's really critical that we as a group, the alderman, mayor, city council and city administrator are all be on the same page, so when we go into the year, there's not questions from any of us that we can't answer about money we're spending on this or that, or was that in the budget or not, we need to know those things, I think, and know that roughly well to be able to communicate that to to the patrons of town when they're asking those questions, okay, so, very important and we need to get through it. I don't think it'll be real drawn out, real painful, I think it's gonna be highlighting what's what, what the capital expenditures are, some of those kind of things, options, I guess, which is gonna present to us tonight and kind of go from there, so with that being said, I'll turn things over to you and it's your party.
All right, so I set out a packet last week or the week before, just to give you guys a preview before this meeting, so you had a chance to review the information. I did want to point out some of the accomplishments and that was included in my memo. You guys are fairly hard, so I want to make sure that you all know that some of those big projects that they are working on. One thing that's pointed out to me is we have not completed the underground electric at the Nissan Division, but I anticipated that would be done by the end of the fiscal year, so that's why I included it. It may or may not be done, just depending on the weather and things like that, so, and then just some upcoming projects for 2021, what was included in the original budget was everything that all of the departments had requested that made sense. They didn't ask for anything that didn't really make sense, you know, these were pieces of equipment that would make their jobs easier, things like that, so so I wanted to try to include that as much as possible, as much as would fit in the budget. So, everything that I talked to the department head about is included in the original version of the budget. This is where it's the hard part, because our general fund was kind of lacking, so we're gonna have to make some changes here. So, just as a general overview, property tax revenue trends are, they're actually pretty stable, after, I consulted with Lynn, he was willing to give his expertise and we talked today and one of the things that he pointed out, I had budgeted for 98%, really a 2% decrease in all tax revenues, but really our property tax revenues don't have to have that 2%. I mean, they're relatively steady, so, so what I budgeted is, it's a little bit less than what than what we brought in this last year, just to be on the conservative side, but I anticipate that they're gonna remain pretty steady for us. So that was good and that helped increase a little bit in our general revenue. Based on the figures that you guys had, we were about $100,000 deficit in the general fund. After some recalculations, I've got it down to about $30,000 deficit, but, and possibly even less than that, so, we'll talk about that in a minute. The, the sales tax, that is, that is where, that is my concern, that's my main concern. When we did projections in November, it looked like we were down about overall 9% and then whenever I did projections based on December revenues and included the property tax revenues, we're actually up 11%. But we do think that part of that is based on the fact that the people were able to come to Centralia and pay the property taxes, so just in our real estate property taxes, we are at 74% for the same time last year in collections, which is awesome. And that's how it brings us to an overall, well, not just that, but we also have the public safety sales tax, and so that brings us to an overall 11% above what we were last year. So that is a step in the right direction, but it doesn't solve all of our problems.
Can you touch quickly on the safety, public safety tax and where we're at compared to what we thought we would be just at this time?
Right.
Can you just touch on that?
Overall, we're projected at about $150,000 this year, we had a project, we had budgeted for 200, so we are lower than what we had anticipated. We are still on track to purchase the equipment that we had, so that we had purchased with the fire department, we hired two officers in the police department. We did not build the animal holding facility that we had anticipated in this current budget, that's gonna roll over to the next budget. So some things like that, it's less than what we anticipated, I feel that it's, part of it, how people report, some people are quarterly reporters or monthly or annually, so it just depends on when they report and when they get that, straighten out what sales taxes they should be reporting. So this is just a snapshot, December from 2017, 18, 19 and 20, and those are FY '20, so that'll be 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. So, you guys have any questions about that? It's trending up, that's good, you need that? So, this is updated, but I did make some changes, so I just wanted to give you guys this kind of snapshot of estimated unbalances based on some changes that we made, so that we'll have to talk about this a little bit. The changes were made in capital projects. Everything that you have in this budget is, as far as wages go, is based on a recommendation of the employee benefits committee for a two-year wage increase, and so I have not changed those numbers, I do have some alternate numbers. There's a three-year wage increase that the committee was aware of, and then some other, some other members that after I talked to some aldermen and the mayor that I wanted to present, so that you all have that information at a time too, before you make any kind of decision, but but this is what the employee committee has asked for, so, now, within that general fund amount, the total that we have in reserves, including $173,982, $173,982 that is specific for Randolph Road, and then we have some in S Grofer Streets for Cobblestone. We have a reserve amount of $423,982. So, that is what we have sitting in reserves, and that's included in that number, so it's included as an expenditure. If we don't spend it, obviously, we're gonna have it at the end, we're not gonna end the year with $21,000. So, but like I said, that $21,000 is based on some, some capital projects cuts that we had, that we made just to get our numbers to come out right. So, do you have any questions? So wages, that's the biggest thing, I think that's why we have the biggest audience here. Normally, I don't care so much about our budget process, just being a result, so, it's a little hard to see what you guys have up there, it's a little hard to see, so.
That's not intentional, right?
It's not intentional, the, so.
Is this what was at the end of our package we got to us?
Probably. This would be, this is a two-year increase versus a three-year increase, so this is what the committee was aware, they, they're asking for the two-year, they were aware that I was presenting the, the three-year. Just so that everybody has this, to be honest. To tell you the percentages here. So the, the two-year increase would amount to an average of 11.9% increase in year one and 8.94% in year two, that's just an average, it's not exactly the same. 9.4. And they are requesting to keep all benefits as they currently are, which is the city pays for 100% of employee and dependent children insurance, the employees that were not grandpa or grandpa for half of the spouse coverage. So. Like I said, the numbers that you had in your, the numbers that you saw where we ended up with the $21,000 in the general fund, that does include this two-year, two-year increase. That includes reclassification on the current pay scale, I looked at some other numbers. So we've got a two-year increase versus a three-year increase, two-year is already in the budget as presented, recommended by the committee, three-year. The difference in the general fund between the two-year and three-year for the first year is $45,700. So that would give us an additional $45,700 that we would not have in expenditures in the general fund. And the other funds are actually relatively healthy, they're very healthy actually. Sorry, I didn't put that number, those numbers in there, but it does affect the other funds as well, just not as much as the general fund, which is the one that we're always most concerned about, as far as balance goes. The other funds are, they're self-generating, they generate their own money, they're on the revenue, so it's not as bad of a, a hit to their funds overall. So, Robert actually helped me modify the spreadsheet a little bit to figure out some percentages, just to say if we offered 95 or 96 or 97 or 98% of what the employees had asked for, and I did do that. I don't think it's, I don't think I actually ended up putting it in here, but the only concern I do have with that is that we would have to renegotiate a pay scale and doing it by the percentages, we would have to completely redo the pay scale, whereas if we do the steps increase, step and grade increase, we keep the current pay scale, or we can do an overall percentage, so after our talk to Sydney, we would have to do additional negotiations to be able to adopt something like that, to offer that. But I do have those numbers, if you guys are interested to see them, because it is significant.
Just to interject here a little bit, the sliding pay scale creates problems somewhat, can. It's much more difficult for us to implement it and get it to place when we have steps in place that are based upon your step and your level, a grade level and step, but the problem with the slide scale sometimes is it gets into finite details with people talking to one another, it happens. You say what you want, and it's not illegal for somebody to talk about your pay to another person, you can't fire him for it, you've heard that for years in business, you can't, it's gonna happen. So you get into where people are splitting hairs over a quarter of a percent, well, I got, you know, my, my estimate came to three and a quarter or five and a quarter, whatever it is this year, versus somebody getting four and three quarters, so for me, because of that chatter, you know, I think that it makes sense for us to stay what we're accustomed to and we've talked about the two-year budget being in here, and with just some thoughts I have, some things we've talked about, so I can flush it out with you folks and you can hear what we kind of talk about a little bit, and you can take that away from here, think about it. I think the two-year plan that we've got in the budget is what we should, I would hope to think that we can try to get to versus a three-year plan. One of the things that was really kind of shocking to me is I got to look at some things, and we were talking a little bit further here this lately, is this, the minimum wage change steers me toward me to get somewhere probably in two years to get and retain and keep our good employees and attract the right kind of employees and people we want to attract. It costs us far more to replace somebody that gets disenchanted leaves, and I think it puts us in a place to where, if somebody says they're, they're not happy, they're not looking at the whole package if we're able to do this in two years, and they can see what we're doing and what we're trying to do in good faith, and we talked about this package, right? And at that point, it's just an hourly basis that they're looking at, not the whole package of, you know, your insurance being paid 100% with your children. You know, that's, that's better than any insurance I've ever had, we got a really good package that way, but to be getting where we need to at an overall level, where all the associates that we have with the city of Centralia are being paid as equally as they could possibly be paid in a market our size, compared to having to drive, go to places and the hardships of getting to and from work and costs associated with such and what your time was, right, travel time, that kind of stuff. So as we kind of talked a little bit about that, I've seen that the, this minimum wage is going up and it's gonna go up again significantly next year, beginning next year at the same time. We are about only, with this the way it is, we're only about 30 cents above at the entry levels of some of our, our grades above the minimum wage, is that correct? And when we were talking about that, we'll make sure, what I'm saying is what we talked about, I'm pretty sure it is, so, what he's saying, if there's some numbers, especially important numbers like this, I like to be real, really close. So we talked about that, just to kind of give you an idea, fleshing this out a little bit, but we've kind of been talking around about it here. Not to leave anybody out, that's why we're having these planning meetings, everybody's input is absolutely needed and we consider it, I mean, that's what we gotta do, but I just think that we, for us to get where we need to be and be able to look people in the eye and say, and make the job easier for us as well as our associates that we work with and works for the city and represent the city, if we can do it in two years, I think that's what we should absolutely strive to do, it's in the budget the way we've set it up today so far, and I think there's plenty of, we're, we're not in dire straits. So when you hear there's a $36,000 gap or whatever it may be, it's not really a gap, it's how you look at it, we're not really upside down. We just gotta make sure that we, when we get done buzzing, that we're right side of plenty, if that makes sense, so.
It's cutting it close, and that's what we gotta be careful with. We've known for a few years now that if we, if we aren't prudent with the way we line things up and balance everything, we can
Agree 100%.
get ourselves into a bigger issue.
Capital stuff, you know, things that have life cycles, we need to make sure we're doing a really, really good job of rotating those in and out to where we don't get hit with a budget, an extra couple hundred thousand dollars vehicles, equipment, that kind of thing. Those are things I know that you guys have already been talking about and would start to really look at in the corner, that's something we have to do, be fiscally responsible and healthy, have to go down the road, so just some thoughts about what we've been talking about, this minimum wage thing, we've had some show shits, you know, they've been passed in the meetings, I've been in, in these, I've been in about three of them, I think, now. That was requested somebody, neither as a mayor and partly the board be involved, because that way it's heard directly from us versus being reported to. No, I don't think there's any intent of anybody insinuating that, you know, that it wasn't being properly reported, but just it feels a little bit more personal, because it is. So the bottom line is, that's what we've kind of talked about in three sessions, I think, we've, I've been involved with, so, just kind of giving you my feedback of that, and I think that it eliminates a lot of problems moving down the road, you gotta look somebody up and say, well, if that's what you feel like, then I guess you could do something different. I think that'd be more than fair and we're a great place to live and work and be, so, just thoughts, so, who are you?
So, another way that we have tried to really reduce just reduce money in the general fund, specifically in the general fund, in our public works utilities departments, it's not as easy to cut the overtime, I mean, they're mandatory on call and things like that, so you have emergency situations. We are going to watch overtime, no unnecessary overtime is going to be allowed, but back to the general fund, that really hits city hall, police department, and I've talked to Lieutenant Chris on several occasions, and we've talked about the overtime and dispatch and things like that, and that's something he's really been able to curb recently, and then Tara's worked really hard to reduce overtime in city hall as well. And another way that we would like to, to do that, to make sure that we're able to stay on budget, is proposing to make the city clerk and deputy city clerk's position salary. So, that, and they would be salaried exempt, we just, Tara and I were, we had a webinar recently on changes to FSLI and, or FLSA, excuse me, I didn't say it wrong. The Fair Labor Standard, and it was talking about exempt employees and, you know, what would qualify, and those two positions, because they're administrative and what they do because of their job duties, we didn't run it by Sydney just to make sure, but they would qualify as exempt employees if we chose to make those positions salary and reduce that amount of overtime. So, question about that? Okay, so, the next slide is something that the mayor had actually asked me to prepare based on the overtime or the 11.9% increase, this is something different, the committee has not seen this one yet, just, we've just talked about it today, it's just something they added in at the last minute, it just is another option. But this would be a 10% increase across the board, so instead of, so our wage scales look like this. And people are at a, you know, A, B, C, D, whatever, on, and then they, at certain benchmarks, they get bumped up steps. So typically, most people start at a step one, and then at six months, they go to a two, and so on and so forth, as it, as it's set by them. So, with what we're trying to do based on our wage reclassification, was use our current pay scale and move people around. But if we take the average and do it across the board, we can leave people at the same steps, but their pay increases, does that make sense? Pay increases still, and then it gets those pay scales closer to where they're supposed to be. And so, when we were looking at this, the mayor asked me to prepare this, so that was, and we did a 10% instead of 11.9% increase on that, but that's, that's what it would look like, general fund alone, it would be, it would save $22,500 right off the bat.
That still gets a long way first year, but we're trying to get it.
Right, overall, we're looking at 20%. So first year, we would be looking at 10%, and then he proposed a 7.5%, so that would be 17 and a half percent out of 20% that the employees are asking for. This is up for discussion.
Had massive discussion with the.
Absolutely.
This, so, this was just thrown out, about to get where we're going, trying to find a route, it's just some quick discussion today.
Right.
Some talking, so this is.
The issue with going to say the request for average wages is you basically gotta take the existing pay scale chart, throw it out the window and redesign a new one, realign everyone, negotiate all of that stuff, and it's a, it's a huge undertaking. Because not every position should increase the same, even if we do, only a percentage of the request for average wage, it's a little bit significant. This is a way to simplify it. Doesn't get everybody to, to ask.
No, but it does get very close.
Just trying to thank you, actually, actually, to get from point A to point B, and I'll always be happy getting there, let's be able to afford to do it. That's, that's why that's in there, okay, so.
So was that year one, or was that?
That was year one. The first column, the lighter blue or whatever, periwinkle, is what is in the budget. And then the teal color is, would be just a 10% across the board increase.
Then we're able to stay up to where you're going.
And how does the? I'm just, I think you said seven and a half percent is a little less than the overall asking. So this would fall slightly below the two-year.
Two and a half percent, it'd be two and a half percent, 20%, 10, 10 first year, seven and a half the second year. To get to a two-year plan, we feel it will swallow the budget to get there two-year, for sure. Just thinking, not to say that that's not estimate, but.
No, but we do need, so, we are presenting to you what the committee has asked for, which is what is in the budget, and so the board would need to discuss and decide what they would like to present back to the committee, and we can do that at a different, at a different meeting, with the next meeting, we can set a closed session and discuss what you all want to do with that, do you guys have any questions, anything you guys want to say?
Safe and far.
I think it's just something that we all need to study.
Sure.
And look over.
Yeah, I feel like 10% is showing us short for what we're worth, honestly.
Well, it's just 10, this is the first increase, because you're asking for 11.9, so it's 1.9% different, but.
But then the second year, we would go to 7.5%, did I hear that correctly?
It would be an additional 7.5 over and above this, so it'd be 17.5 total percent from right now instead of 20.
So a substantial increase, and is, I understand that we have above-average benefits too, so it's maybe not hitting the full average pay, but it's still, we got above-average benefits, you know, and if we averaged it all together, it still would be still be good.
And it's something that will be talked about further, so it doesn't have to be.
No, you guys can read this, this says the percentages based on 95, 96, 97, and 98% of what they ask, so. Can you read that? It was a lot better on my screen.
Or you're not driving.
We stood in there with those numbers that I've been working on, calculating and really just trying to find the best overall option for everybody. So, do you have any more questions about wages?
Comparable wise, where does this stand with comparables, like other cities, same size, same budget?
Still very comparable.
It's below that, the minimum, we ask for minimum. We ask for the.
You ask for average.
We ask for the minimum.
Minimum average.
The minimum average of our comparables, then we're gonna go 3.5% less, 2 and a half percent, sorry, of what our minimum comparable is.
We're sub 10 and a half over two years. Just wanna say that, 17 and a half over two years.
I'm just presenting what I was asking for.
But we'll discuss it, I mean, it'll be discussed, it'll be voted on, and just want to let you know, I'm trying to get from point A to point B, we are, I'm trying to help lead that.
Right, and I agree with the mayor that two years is better than three, if we can do it in two years. I know that the employees would appreciate that, instead of 5% now and 4% now, then next year, and then, so two years is better than three.
Just, are those numbers something you can print off so we can look at?
Yeah, yeah, and since I just did them today, then I can, I haven't had a chance to talk to the committee, but I can present it all for you.
And I give, I just, I would like to look.
Let's be really clear, this was not, I was trying to put some things together as we were talking about a three-year plan versus a two-year plan, it was kind of a prominent discussion, trying to get somewhere. So I'm trying to find us a negotiated range that's reasonable for us to be able to set out and talk later on that we choose to go that route. So this in no way was thrown up here to put the committee on the spot, you know, that, we're not making the decision tonight, but we gotta find our way and to make a pretty substantial leap over two years is a lot for us to do and swallow in the budget, when the budget's falling short for some of our tax records, right? So, just trying to put that together, so this was in no way was an ambush for anybody, so I don't, I wanna make sure that, that's understood. I, I would hope you'd see us, hell, this is pretty aggressive, I mean, we're, you know, what we're trying to do, and we're trying to get there, so I hope that, you know, you guys don't feel that or the ladies or gentlemen that are on the other side of the fence of being associated with us in the city doesn't see we're trying, trying to get where we need to be.
I agree.
That wasn't, that wasn't the point tonight, throwing it up there and.
We do appreciate that, definitely, but I also want it to be known as well, like, the figures that we
Sure.
that we all put together in the committee to present were the minimums of our comparables as what we presented to everybody, so.
That's fair.
I just wanted to let everybody know.
That's, that's very fair, so.
They're, they're the average, I don't know, like, they're the average starting wage.
Public comparable.
Yeah.
Other comparable.
They're the average starting wage, they're not minimums, they're the average starting wage.
Of what other towns, white-sized towns and horses, average means?
Starting wage.
Okay, got you.
Yeah, that's, if we were starting.
Right, understood.
Right.
Right. Absolutely.
But, but nobody is losing their steps on the scale, so if they have met those benchmarks of six months and four years or nearly increases, they're staying. Like, if somebody's at an H3, they would stay at a three, or a seven, or a nine, they're not gonna lose their steps at all, we had talked about that too. We had talked about that too, so just to make sure that everybody was on the same page with that. So, all right. So I did pass them a sheet that shows what the, what the wages would be, that, that are calculated in that 10%. So they've got that information. So, all right, any other, anything, any other questions about wages? Nope, okay. So our next thing is our capital projects overview. So like I said, in the capital budget, I did include in the budget, the original budget that you saw, all of the asks that made sense for the departments. We start with the police department. They had requested a patrol car, to replace a patrol car. And that was on our schedule. We were on a schedule to start replacing patrol cars, and then start replacing it every other year, or every three years. Plus an animal control vehicle, and the animal control, animal holding facility. In the numbers that I gave you, I did cut a patrol car, just to get where we needed it to be. But that is something you can look...
Figure that to be the patrol car, or to keep the animal control vehicle?
Yeah, that's what I did. But that's up to the board, how you would proceed with that. I mean, if we need the patrol car, then we can mark that in there.
Can I throw this out there? Could I, here it comes?
Sure. In the last two weeks, I've put almost $2,200 for the work of the patrol car. Just, still making this thing to break. Five patrol cars over $100,000. Okay? When we started this whole thing last year, it was replaced... Was it two last year? Yeah, so it's two to a two. And then that would bring us up to where we could do one...
Every other year?
Every other year. So we had the schedule worked out in our head, the way it worked. If you want to keep double money in the maintenance, we know what can, we can do that. But it's going to get even more expensive. We got one that may end up having a motor. So I'm just, I'm just letting you know that where we're at is we're way behind where it falls in.
Which one, you might need a motor?
Canine car. That was a, that was a used car when we bought it. It wasn't. Oh, so, so, oh, that's right.
It was, it was gifted, you're right.
How many, let me ask a quick question, just because I can ask this question. How many vehicles do we have? Okay. The city has a fleet of eight vehicles within the, within the police department, okay? Actual patrol vehicles, okay? We don't count mine or Sandy's in that, okay? So that brings us down to six. I didn't know if you were... Yeah, no, it's not. I could add, nothing going.
Two recently?
Yes.
Well, we bought mine, and we bought, and we bought the four.
I went, we bought two patrol cars in the last couple of years?
Yes, one each year.
Yeah. This happened way back when, when we started.
Oh, that was a problem a couple of years ago when I was on the board. I remember discussing it.
They were behind. They were behind it.
Well, truth be told, my own PD's not the only one that I cut something to, so... Also in the general fund, we have the street department. I talked about it, a bit more for the tractor. That's something that is possibly going to get moved to our capital projects for next year. And since we do use it at the lagoons, it can be an expense from our sewer fund. So I took it out of the general fund, the street sweeper. I did leave it in. It's not completely taken out, but it was at $160,000. And we can do a lease purchase on it for three years, for 55, it's probably about $55,750 a year. So that is left in, and that's included in that number that I gave you before. And then another...
At the one sixth year, at the 56.
At the 56.
With the three-year rates.
It's, yeah.
The one we have, I got a vacuum that's almost 20 years old, so I've got as much stuff as I can.
Yeah.
He said that.
I don't have it really, but I mean, I got your clean, my front of my driveway. My yard's my sanctuary, it's where I keep my sand, whatever it is, so...
It's, it's wore out. I mean, we've, we've got almost 7,000 hours on it. So it's about the most money repairing it as we did buying it years ago, so...
Sure.
It's, it's way best it's used.
And then we also included storm sewer lining. And I wanted to talk about this because it is a large amount of money. It's $150,000. But this is that section right underneath extreme mark that definitely needs repair. And so I feel very strongly that we should not cut this from this year's budget. Ultimately, it's up to the board, but that would be my suggestion. And then the fire department, we included some SDVA equipment and more turnout gear. Just some capital items there for them. Another thing I wanted to touch on with the public safety sales tax. Last year's budget, I'm not really exactly sure, we weren't exactly sure what was going to happen with that, how much money we were going to get. Obviously, the over budgeted revenues, which kind of hit us. But this year, I would like to start a reserve fund. I, I would like to start at 5%. We could do as much as, you know, we could increase that in, in other years. But right off the bat, taking 5% out of that public safety sales tax and putting it in a public safety sales tax reserve fund. We do that, we already do that with the park department, the park sales tax, and it works out well. So that fund can just build up, and we have it there if we need it for a renovation, if something happens, we need a big item that, that we don't have the money for. Otherwise, I made specific line items in your, in the revenue funds. One for transfer for, they're both coming, going to the general fund, so the money's going to get all there, it's going to be commingled. But there's a separate line item for each transfer for the fire department, and one for the police department. It's a 75/25 split of the remaining 95% of the public safety sales tax. Does that make sense? Would you like to increase that amount, or are you okay with 5%? I thought 5% was fair to start with, just because of the state of our general fund?
We're going to need to buy a fire truck. It'd be, that's a conversation we've had recently, and down the road, we're going to need that. Those aren't cheap.
Down the road, you'll need a new fire truck, down the road.
Yeah.
Way down the road.
Maybe not way down the road.
It could be tomorrow, I don't know.
That's, that's, that's something about your first point.
Well, I mean, that's the thing. It's sad, we were, we used to have cigarette fumes, and all that.
We do, we still do. It has about five now, so it's pretty easy. It's not a lot.
Right, I want to make that 10% out of it.
We need to do something to set money aside, because it was, it was wrong of us of not buying the equipment we needed. And, I mean, that, I'm sorry, that's one of those that's in my head, and showing a little bit, realizing how bad that equipment was, that our firefighters were. But we moved out of that system money aside, so when those things come up, we can take care of them immediately. So definitely, my mind was thinking 10%, though, especially if you're talking... 5% of $150,000 isn't going to go very far. 10% will add up a little quicker.
We locked down on the last fire truck, because we had a gift that we, that helped out on.
We did. The donation.
Helped out considerable.
That paid off the fire truck.
But we still have it.
We still had $80,000 in that, but...
Or we still in paying on it.
Correct. It was a five-year lease, though, I think.
Five years, I think.
So...
We're looking at how do we have some reserves where we're not on the ball? And if something unexpectedly happens, and it's, it's bad to say, but if we had a $40,000, $50,000 situation come up that we weren't ready for, in some, some departments, it could be, we'd have to shuffle some money and do some scrims. So I mean, we're having to look at how do we, are, how are we a little bit more conservative, holding some back of the forecasted revenues from, you know, our income, which is our tax base, all right? So bottom line is, you know, we're trying to do that, as well as balance all these other balls that we're trying to catch up on, and we've gotten behind on, you know, in the departments as well.
So we do need to, we don't have to decide today. Just, I need feedback on, you know, if we do end up with a positive, after our reserves, I mean, just keep in mind that we do have reserves in our general fund. So we have $250,000 set back. So we're not going to, we're not going to run the general fund dry by any means.
But that's not a load of money.
It's not a load of money. So...
That's not, not enough.
No, it's not much at all. And that reserve really should be higher, but in order for us to be able to do what we need to do right now, it's a little bit lower. I anticipate, unfortunately, probably not next year. We'll have the same issue again next year, I believe, coming up with, with the pay increases that we promised. But hopefully, the years after that, we're going to be able to level out. But I'll probably don't know until by then, worrying about this.
You may want to look at it as a 10% reserve, and tell us what that looks like as well.
Okay.
Is that, would that be fair for us to want to see? You guys up to see that?
Okay.
I would say minimum of eight, I would like ten, I mean, so if it is...
And the general fund? Or in public safety sales tax?
What, are we doing any reserves in the general?
Yeah, that's 250. We have 200, we have a reserve.
Are we adding any to that each year? Or is that just sitting there?
No, it just sits there. And that's actually lower than what it should be. We really, it really should be higher than that. That's the one I'm talking about, that we should...
How do we start squirreling away even 1%, 2% to begin with, if that's all we can do?
Right. We need to look to do that over a three-year period, where we want to be, what that number will look like, just for us and bumper, just to look at, right?
Just like our retirement plans, if we don't start putting a percent away and increasing a little bit, we'll never get there. If we have to, with the city, we won't be financially viable. And we've got to, we've got to do something.
Okay. So, if I just go to the capital projects from the general fund? So our enterprise funds, a couple of things. I have a couple 50% things there, the water, our rate for the skid loader, commercial mower. Those are going to be split 50/50 between electric and water. There is $89,000 budgeted, or it's over $89,000 budgeted there for the equipment replacement fund for the water department. And that is required by DNR. That's something that we had to complete, I had created a completely new fund just for equipment replacement. We already have one for sewer replacement, which I anticipate, that we have, we have not been putting any in, into it for many years. But I anticipate we will have to, once we start with the revenue bonds and the SRA funding for the sewer side of things. But for the equipment replacement fund for water, I had to create that to satisfy DNR. And so we will be putting that amount, exact amount away, every single year for, for equipment replacement. And water. And then electric. So there's a new building for equipment. That is actually physically a new building. Two or three days is what we're anticipating. I don't know if you've got any pressing, any information? Nope. We've been talking about it. I budgeted $50,000 for that. We'll see what it actually comes out to. Because they have requested, the electric department has requested an additional bucket truck. So they're not replacing one, they're actually adding one, the little one. So that's one that they use all the time.
What, what are you willing for that?
100 and... 132. 132, 132, 132, 132.
Let's just walk through the Q's.
One thing that we've been talking about for a while is a backyard machine. With all of this new equipment, things that we're looking at this year, we did push that off for one more year, for the next fiscal year. A TracO for the, and then the AMI system, which is another large purchase. For us, $750,000.
Say that's the biggest, the main thing, the AMI. Come down, but manual reading meters, that's all I've got. Every time we put one in, it's, you have to go walk over and read it.
Right. And we did have the ball rolling on that. We're still not quite there with our utility building software. And then as soon as that, but as soon as that is installed, we're ready to go. We should be ready for this, as soon as we're ready to install, hopefully, as soon as April 1, for the AMI.
What's, what's the timeline on this AMI, the system? When do we really need to get that in place? Now?
Oh, probably about six months ago.
First half of the year?
Well, six months ago would have been great. Yeah, we need to get it done now. We're behind on it. We are behind on it. We had to get the utility building software updated, otherwise it would not support AMI. That's still not completed yet. We're working on getting all of that done, working with the company. And then as soon as we get the financing information back for the AMI system, we should be ready to go. But I, since we're looking at it in FY '21, it'll be at least April 1. But if we get a boot on the ground April 1, that would be quite... Or not, it'll be that quick. Major distribution upgrades, we talked about that. We had budgeted for 125,000 major distribution upgrades. Do you want to kind of touch on what that would be?
Well, I mean, just, the bar running down Highway 22 is way too small. It needs to be bigger, so it can carry more. It's like having a, having an inch and a half pipe full of water running into a three-quarter. And then you get hot weather, you get low VJ out towards the country public states, trailerboard, and it, I mean, that's going to be a big project. That's not something I've even got enough equipment for people to even attempt. That's ma, that's mainly the biggest component of it. About every pole down through there, we'll probably have to get replays. Bigger crossarms, bulkier equipment, carrying weight of the bigger water. So that's going to be the bulk of that, that number. And whatever underground we can get done.
Are we good on the substations this year, 2020, 2021? 2020 for sure, 2021, we're not hesitating. I mean, we probably need to start thinking about that this year.
Yeah. But if you, you talk to our substation engineers, they're not concerned with a 30-year-old substation. But you talk to your, the insurance company that's insuring it, they are concerned about it. So, I mean...
Well, that's something that's going to happen down the road.
Yeah.
It's a fact. Just when, but we need to, if it hits and we're not even close to ready for it, that's a crisis financially, right?
Yep.
That's something we've got to start thinking about more seriously, I'd say. The substation goes, you're in trouble, aren't you? If you're on a ride with a substation.
Do we need, or back, an electric rate increase to start saving money for that, or building the fund up for that?
Uh, yes. We, we do have a reserve fund, and y'all have big packets, right?
Yeah.
Okay, it's line, it's in the enterprise funds. I don't know how many pages back. It's actually page three and four of the electric. They start with account number 33. So it's account number 33, 334, 6903. We have a, a reserve account. And so we have... And so we have budgeted six hundred nine thousand eight hundred twenty six dollars in that account this year.
What will it cost to replace it? I'm trying to remember, my Wilson Street cost. Somewhere around in there. Four hundred thousand dollars short?
And we do have a healthy fund rebalance in the electric fund, so. We could look at, um. We put fifty thousand dollars every year into that depreciation. We used that reserve fund whenever we did the upgrades for the, all the street lighting and things like that, so we're building that back up. Uh, but we could put more, like seventy five into that reserve this year, um, and we would still have a healthy balance in our electric fund at the end of the year. So if that's something you all like see, I'm, I'm happy to do that. An additional twenty five thousand.
A healthy balance being what, yeah?
My three hundred and twenty four thousand is what we're projected to end with. But that is including six hundred nine thousand dollars as an expenditure.
Okay, got you, yeah, okay.
So, almost to money.
I think we should look at it a little more in there so that we're. Closer to prepare when it happens.
Cause that, that's, to me, that's nothing more, that's another life cycle. It's, it's a life cycle, uh, liability we have on books, asset we have on books, it's kind of much, of course, it's kind of, no different than car or truck, you know, but.
You know, if something goes wrong with one of the subs, you're looking at a portable sub being brought in. And, cause that, that other sub, we're not gonna be up and running like that.
Million dollars to replace, plus the rental of a portable sub?
Depending on the time of the year, we can get away with one.
Since they did end up pulling, they, they got the wires pulled underneath the railroad tracks, um, we could run off of Wilson Street for a period of time if needed, the whole third.
Cold weather time.
Yeah, that's, not August?
Yeah, okay. So those are, you have any other questions that goes? So this is our street overlay project, um, there is Lakeview Street out of three hundred and twenty four, that's what we're there for, like an overlay. That's not what we would have to do with that street, so that is probably going to change, um, if we were going to do something there, it would be extending.
Straighten it out?
Yeah, straighten it out all the way up, so Lakeview or possibly partially, you know, had a good idea of just kind of angling it to, or be too late, but making it wider. So it doesn't have that weird jog there, um, out of the street. We did have plans on that, so we need to look at those. But this is our overlay project, these are our overlay projects. Subject to change, of course, if something happens.
They ended up, what, this year about two hundred, we were talking about two hundred and five, right?
Mm-hmm.
When we got down to it, so we're looking at increasing that pretty substantially if we go to two thousand seven.
Mm-hmm.
Which is good, we put something we really need to be investing in is our infrastructure street. So good, nice.
So is this, uh. Let's see, the rest of Allen Street, not here going north.
Really from Lakeview south is the biggest problem right now, especially.
Yeah, I wasn't necessarily talking about this year. It's not in here at all.
Well, from the senior center uptown is all been redone.
Right.
The other section.
It's about fifteen, fifteen, eleven.
Yeah, it's been, it's really not that bad, we've got a lot of manhole spots that could be further around.
The north side of the highway we paved in not too many years ago. Yeah, that's, yeah, it'd just be from the tracks to the highway, and that's still pretty good shape.
It wasn't on the list at all, that's why I was asking, and I could tell you, there's someone who sits in an office that overlooks that street, and asks you about it now and again, so I'm just bringing it up, just, cause I didn't see it on the list at all.
Stretch between the tracks, it's still bad right there.
And that's probably what the focus. And all, I wasn't asking for next year, it wasn't on the list.
Okay.
Very good, I, I like any of that as that, even like to look at all the, the investment that we were talking about earlier on some press.
So, utility rates, um, your budget does not include an increase in, um, electric rates. I felt like that was important, because we are looking, we do have to increase water and sewer rates, um, for a bond issue, and, um, so tho- those increases were in there. Um, your water and sewer budget, um, was presented to DNR kind of on a rough draft a couple of months ago. And so the majority of what is in your packet and what is in this budget is what we presented to them, the only difference, um, is our, our wages, that's the only thing that's different. We have not raised residential rates for solid waste, um, since two thousand sixteen, they actually decreased at that point in time. Current budget does look at an increase, um, seven, uh, dollar a half a month. No planned commercial rate increase for twenty twenty one. This is something that you all can say yeah or no.
How do we, I get to ask this to people, naturally when you start talking about the cost at the meter or on your bill, help me understand, so we can understand, when people ask us this question. How do we rate as a, for a town for our, our costs? Cause I know we're lower than most places.
Right, I, to be honest, I'm not really sure.
I mean, but that's what I hear, I mean, it's, so is that right, I mean, Mike, I mean, who knows that?
Utility parks, we've been low, I don't know where we're at.
On the trash, we are lower, and we did that study years ago, and we were quite a bit lower than a lot of places.
Well, we might be lower than that, that may get revisited whether we're the trash business or not. That's what I'm saying.
Right. And the reason, partly reason for this increase is the increase in the use of our roll-off recycling bins. Included in everybody's regular trash, but people are using it so much, we had to increase to two times a week pickup.
Almost not go four.
We almost need to go three times a week, and so that's an additional cost to us. So in order to be able to continue to offer that, and I, I feel like it's going to get worse, because we just recovered from Danes, and I called Danes to talk about it, um, just to, so I could get clarification. Curbside recycling is going to be limited to plastics and tin and aluminum, there are no glass, no, um, fiber, no cardboard. Uh, because, except with the city of Columbia, landfill won't accept those items, they just will not accept them from him in a, in one load.
They're gonna be separated.
They have to be separated, so he would have to do two different recycling pickups, and then of course, we would be paying for that, be paying extra for that. So, um, I feel, have, I have a feeling that our recycling bins are going to get used quite a bit more for those fiber things. People, you know, want to put the, uh, cardboard in and things like that, so they're gonna take it over there instead. Unless they're just.
Probably a dump truck load up, a cardboard off the ground every week.
Is that that side?
Yeah.
So unfortunately, I feel like it's necessary.
So is it, if this, what this increase, would that cover four, will it, four pickups a week, or not? Cover that expense?
No.
Just minimalizes the deficit.
Yes.
What would that increase be, to cover, I mean, that's something we'll need to figure out.
Other on this, is this residential, or are you looking at commercial too, I mean, what's, does it raise about the same?
No, I'm not, I, we did a rate increase last year, I don't think, I wasn't anticipating another one.
Is it paying for itself though?
You're not sure here.
I, my whole point about this, we just gotta make sure they're paying for itself.
Right.
So they should be paying Danes on top of what the residents are paying.
Right. But it is. And then, the last one I did have, um, I did figure electric rate increases at five percent and a two percent, I didn't do two and a half, I don't know why, I just did two. This is what it would, what the revenues would look like if we did, but if we are. I just really wasn't looking at an electric rate increase this year.
So in the budget, you haven't figured out. Remember what the rate increases are on the sewer and water?
I believe sewer is, what, ten percent, and water is fifteen. Unless sewer's supposed to be five. I don't think it's ten.
I don't think it's electric.
I don't think, maybe five.
Yeah, I don't think it was ten.
Was it five, was, was it ten the first year then?
Yeah.
But I, water is gonna have to be fifteen, because we had it at ten, and then they came back and said, no, you're gonna have to do fifteen, you know.
Electrical fund's okay with the way that it's been happening.
So is the water and sewer.
Those are for the bond issue. My vote would be to make sure trash is paying for itself, and leave that alone and put it in the pool. I don't need to increase that.
Yeah, if it takes another thirty four cents at this point. You know, versus the dollar and a half, I mean. We should consider that, I think, too, I don't know what it is when we're looking at it, so if we look at it, it's most now.
Okay. Do you have any other questions? Is there all discussion?
We have a question, what is, what was the benefit of going to the trash company that we're with right now?
Um, I looked at the.
Instead of doing it ourselves?
Yeah, I looked at the numbers, um, recently, and I don't remember exactly what they were, but I really think it was a savings to the city of about a hundred thousand a year.
Big thing was, uh, labor costs, just help, having help here, just getting people to want to do it, and then just maintenance in the trucks, just, we were spending sixty, seventy thousand dollars on maintenance and fuel, it was outrageous.
But we are looking at doing a, a study on that, right, we've talked about that, we're gonna, we're gonna see how a third party down our trash. What can we do at, versus, we're gonna see, just to make sure, you gotta check everybody.
That's, that's the way we bid it out when we went out, we, we figured out all our expenses.
Understood, understood, you gotta come, is advantageous for us to do it or not, but the problem is, I still check my insurance every other year, to make sure that it hasn't gone up twenty five percent. So, as this goes up twenty five percent, it goes unchecked, it's forty percent, hell, what you thought you were saving, we may be able to put a hundred thousand dollars to bank here, having two, two city employees and whatever, and get back in business. If it pays for itself the first year, and what you gotta buy to get back in the business and breaks even, then your return on investment goes through the roof the next year, you know, so.
Well, at the same rates we were at, we were losing money. I think every year, they were getting all the trades from the.
Understood, understood, if we were to subsidize it, I can, but it concerns the third party and stuff, I, I understand you do it, but.
We were gonna have high year contracts, so we don't need to look at it again anyway.
So we got time to look at it, I think we're still in it, we got a while, but.
And it's, this year, it'll be twenty one.
Best in class, uh, purchasing rules, we have you reevaluate products like that every three to five years anyways, and that would be, you know, industry standard, you do those types of things, just to make sure it's the right thing to do. I'd rather employ a couple extra people in the city and pay that, but is it still financially responsible, they have to be financially responsible. Like, we're talking about increasing, increase here, increase there, and we're cutting this and cutting that, to try to make sure we have a good budget, so.
You know, you get out and you find a hundred thousand dollars here, and, and you take that and multiply it with a five year period, three to five year period, you're talking about half a million, you find that in a couple of buckets, you got a million dollars. You start to then find you have not a quarter of a million dollars of breathing room, and you end up with, you know, six, seven hundred thousand dollars in the bank, and, you know, a quarter of a million dollars you have sitting there, catch something goes wrong, you know. But, you know, the sky's not falling, but you gotta plan ahead, cause you sure can't snap your fingers and make money here. I'd like to, you know, but, you know, I'll probably my big job.
So really, I think that this is just informative, um. More feedback will be needed, um, on, on how to proceed from here, now. If you want more numbers, I have lots and lots of numbers that I've been working on. Figures, um, the capital projects, that's a big thing, you know, and brought up some really good points about their police cars, so we only have one budgeted for this year at this point, um. But they did request two, um, to replace, they would, they would look be replacing other cars. The one thing I want to point out, the reason we did leave it, the one for, um, the annual control vehicle, is it's, um, a very old truck, and then, I believe the engine's been replaced at least once.
It's a two, it's a two thousand one, uh, it's only got a hundred thirty four thousand miles, but yes, the engine has been replaced once, and it's been through us, to the parks department, and back to us, and, yeah, it, it's.
It's probably a hundred and thirty four thousand miles, twenty five miles over hours.
Unless, except for.
Where would we come up with another thirty grand on the police car?
Actually, it'd be, what I talked to others about, it could be right at twenty four.
Okay, all the questions still applies?
Six thousand dollars is still a lot of money, so.
I disagree.
Like I said, we all want to keep paying bills, I'm okay with that too, but, uh, like I said, I think it's kind of silly to keep going down a rattle.
So what part would you replace then, the body, the KNI car?
No. Actually, it's not the worst, um, what is it? The only, the only thing about replacing the KNI car, there's a lot of equipment to go with it, which adds another about ten grand to it. So, the fact is, because I can't take the cage out of a Crown Vic and put it into an explosion, I can't do that, the door poppers, the auxiliary, the couven units, the, the, the little list is quite long. But, what did we say, Crown Vic or the? Yeah, cause we've got one Crown, one, we've got two Crown Vics left, one of them would probably come.
They're both two thousand eleven Crown Vics.
Last year they made.
Would, would, would you say we were sit, been in a month or a week ago, two thousand?
In the last two weeks, I spent just a little over two thousand dollars.
Just, it's, it's, it's not gonna be every week, you just had two bad weeks?
No, within the last two weeks, I had spent a little over two thousand dollars.
You haven't spent any this week?
I picked, I picked bills up today.
Don't go over this.
I picked up the bills today, what is that like?
Cut the average down, man, if you can just stay out of there a week.
Well, that's another, there's a, a reason behind that, I can tell you.
I wouldn't, I don't want to get any repair car that would make it past this.
Well.
Useful life, opposed to it, but where do we come up with the money?
Well, you're saying, I, I, I'm just, I'm just.
If you have a car, we may have, then saw somebody sitting.
Well, and, and I get that, I get that. My, my equipment's a lot cheaper than theirs. My, my equipment's a lot cheaper than theirs, I know that, I understand that, but.
There's still only so much.
I, I, I know, it's, the police department catches them the hell every time, though, when he comes cutting, cutting things out, but, I mean, that's why, that's why we're behind.
We got, we got, we got a one point one five million dollar budget to be proposed, I believe, am I wrong, am I close? It's twenty-five percent of our overall budget, I think, so I mean, we're, we're having to figure out how to make everything balance and, and fit.
And, and I get that, we'll, and we'll play along, that's not, I understand that, but I'm just, I just want y'all to understand that when these bills continue to come in over twenty-five hundred dollars for repairs, you'll understand why.
Anything else, is there any questions?
It's like this been on the deal. It's a council meeting, it's.
You guys drank cookies?
No, I don't think I'm gonna drink, no.
Okay, I have a question, Jeff, on the commercial loss.
Yep.
Hey, so, Parks and Rec, they mow?
They do.
Okay.
So, they have sold a lot of their equipment, they, they, they traded in some of their equipment to buy fewer pieces of equipment, better, your, and it's just difficult for our crews to go borrow or ask them to go get it, so if they have their own, they can do our own property. And right now, we transfer money to the Park Department for mowing, when they mow, um, it doesn't quite hold as much.
The biggest thing is, is getting it more when you need it, um, and also I know, I can speak for my department, we like our water plant to look nice. And if you wait four weeks before you mow, and then you mow three inches, it's hard to clean that up when you have short doors, come, look at your water plant, and the grass is bailed up this high. I think if, I've got some time and some guys that we can keep that looking nice, and keep the water plant or the water tower areas looking nice. Electric guys can keep the substations looking good, and we don't have to rely on Park to do that. Cause we had multiple conversations with, um, Mr. Bennett about that, and just, it's easier if we just do it ourselves.
Logistics is what you're talking about, have it available when you got somebody to be able to do it.
Anybody got anything else?
I will make updates based on what we talked about tonight, um, and just to our reserve funds, and capital projects, and things like that. And I can send you an updated summary sheet, I don't know what you guys want, all the detail, a lot of detail, but, um I suppose you want whatever, do you tell you.
That works. That's pretty, pretty good.
All right, I'll click that, I'll put that together.
Thanks for everybody that can participate tonight, appreciate everybody, the departments, everybody being here, thank you guys. Chief, Department head, thank you guys for being here, appreciate it.